Now we'll move into our public hearing.
To the chair, just to clarify that.
I'm sorry.
It was 4:01.
It's technically 4:01 because there's four A's, no nays, so zero nays, and then one recusal.
One more please. Okay. You're welcome. Public hearing.
Item 6A, hold public hearing, waive first reading, and adopt ordinance enacting a 4.43% rate increase for Recology San Bruno Garbage and Recycling Service to be effective July 1st, 2019.
Finance Director.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Keith DiMartini. I'm the Finance Director for the city. And it is my pleasure this evening to present the annual rate adjustment for garbage services here in the city of San Bruno for fiscal year 1920. The objective of tonight's presentation is to receive an overview of Recology's rate application for next fiscal year. I'm also going to ask that you receive an update from Recology staff, they're here this evening, on various education and outreach efforts that they have going on. I'd like you to also receive an update from the city's consultant that we hired to review the annual rate application, R3 Consulting, on their review and recommendations. And then I'll be asking you to waive the first reading and adopt an ordinance enacting a 4.43% rate increase for Recology effective on July 1st of 2019. Okay, so just a brief agenda for the evening. We'll cover the rate adjustment. We'll talk about the rate changes for residential and commercial toters. We'll talk about the protest period and the public notice that went out to all residents and property owners. Talk about public outreach and education. We'll go over the consultant report. We'll talk about the remaining items on the timeline to implement the rate increase. And then a reminder of our request to counsel this evening and take any questions that you might have. Okay, so just an overview of the rate application that the city received from Recology back in February. The rate increase that is being requested after the city's consultant has conducted their thorough view is a rate increase of 4.43%. And these rates would take effect on July 1st of 2019 if approved by the city council. The rate change factors at a high level are primarily due to the effects of the National Sword campaign by China regarding contaminated waste. This has an impact both on lost revenue for Recology and also additional processing costs on them as well. And then again, Recology and our consultant will go into a little bit more detail about the impacts of the rate increase. Here's a really high-level summary table on the residential garbage toter rate change summary. And you can see the dollar increase for the various sizes of toters that a majority of San Bruno residents currently have. So for example, the 20-gallon toter, the current rate is $23.34, and that toter rate will be increasing to $24.37 effective on July 1st. Up next is a picture of what the public notice looks like that was mailed out, again, to all residents and property owners on March 28th. There was a public hearing that was scheduled that we discussed a while back. The notice also talked about the protest period, the approval process, details about the annual rate adjustment, the proposed increases to garbage, recycling, and the organics types. And as of April 30th, the date that we prepared the staff report, there were 111 written responses received. And checking with staff today, that number has increased to a total of 128 written responses have been received since the date we opened up the period, for your knowledge. Okay, so with that, I'd like to ask Kirsten and Reyna, staff from Recology San Bruno, to come up, and they'll give a brief overview of various education and public outreach efforts that they have currently going on.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Kirsten Pinocchio, the General Manager for Recology San Bruno. And with me tonight, I also have Reyna Oceguera, who is our Waste Zero Specialist. And I've asked her to come tonight because I'm going to have her talk a lot about the outreach, as Reyna is one that conducts a lot of the outreach into our commercial and residential communities. A year ago, when the National Sword had really started to take off, Recology came to the council and asked your permission to really take a hard look at contamination in the residential sector. This was, we were taking that proactive approach, knowing that the cost to process these recyclables was going to increase, and therefore the revenue was also going to decrease for the residents of San Bruno. So back in May a year ago, we started delivering these residential cart hangers to the blue carts that were contaminated. We've had the drivers circle the contaminant and leave this on the cart, and warn the resident that their recycling blue cart was contaminated. And then we also follow up with a written letter to the resident, and then we also will follow up with a phone call. So our efforts in one year, these residential cart hangers have decreased by 60%. And contamination is extremely, has decreased quite a bit. So actually, in the last 30 days, I would say, we haven't had a contaminated load go to our processor. So it's just kind of be mindful that Recology is very aware of the cost, and everything that we do does affect the ratepayers. So we are being extremely mindful of watching our contamination levels on the residential end. So now I'm going to pass the outreach portion to Reyna.
Thank you. As Kirsten said, my name is Reyna Oceguera. I'm a Waste Zero Specialist for Recology San Bruno. And I've been working a lot on outreach this year that I've been in my position. So our first order is commercial signage. We provide commercial signage to all multifamily dwellings and businesses in San Bruno, new multifamily dwellings that open in San Bruno. We give buddy bags, we give a battery bucket, and we give our signage to place on all enclosures and containers, so residents and staff are aware of what should be going into each container. At multifamily residences and commercial partnerships, we go through three processes. Contaminated bin recovery. So I have taken the liberty to really hone in on recycling because of the National Sword and because of the rate increase. We really want to make our residents aware of what is happening to all their recycling that is being contaminated in their bins. So we've made a lot of efforts of contaminated bin recovery, and they're directly aimed towards recycling and organic spins. At sites that have an issue with contamination of their organics and recycle bins, we work with their property managers to assess these bins and to implement a contaminated bin recovery process. So this process is a multi-step process, and first, we have our drivers look at the bins that they're going to service. If it's contaminated, say a recycling bin is contaminated, they do flag it with a green non-collection notice. They note on the tag what is contaminating the bin, and then they leave the bin there, not serviced. Once they come back, they give me the tag. I reach out to the property manager. I tell them what was contaminating the bin. They have their staff go out into the bin, clean out the contamination, and we come back the following day, and they don't have to pay a fee. If the bin is overly contaminated, and they do not want to clean out the contaminants, we can go back and recharge them the contamination fee. We've seen a lot of success with this program that we've implemented specifically at the Google offices managed by CBRE, the Shelter Creek condos, and Jack's Restaurant. Oh, I'm sorry. We also have enclosure audits. So when we get reports from a driver or even the city that an enclosure is overly contaminated or overly filled, we reach out to that business, we do an audit, and we make sure that all bins are placed properly, so residents and staff and our hauler, us, our driver, can access the bins. We also post signage there. And the most recent topic are organics law. So the new AB 1826 law is in place. It's the mandatory organics recycling law. So this was implemented in January 2019, and we're rolling it out into San Francisco slowly. So this is an ongoing effort, and it's basically if a business generates more than four cubic yards of waste per week, they are required to sign up for an organic spin. The lowest amount is 32 gallons. So we've been slowly rolling this out to different businesses, and we've been seeing a lot of success with this. Once I present them with all of this information and they sign up for an organic spin, we provide staff training, and we provide internal bins for them. And a lot of my efforts are going towards the schools. I have a soft spot in my heart for schools. So I've been working a lot with an effort, it's a Waste Zero, Zero Waste Schools Program. So I've been working with the San Mateo Office of Sustainability and the San Mateo County Office of Education, along with the San Bruno Park School District, to implement a Waste Zero Program partnership with these schools. So our pilot school right now is Portola School. All of the teachers and staff are very enthusiastic, and we're rolling that out right now. This is a three-phase program. So the first phase being a needs assessment and planning, which is underway at Portola. The second phase being guided implementation, which includes purchasing of internal bins and implementing an organic spin at the school, at schools that do not already have them, because it is the law by AB 1826. And the final and third phase being sustained success, making the kids accountable for what they put into the bins, and teaching them why it's important to compost and recycle. And we are rolling this out, and we are seeing that in fall 2019, start of the school year, that all schools in the San Bruno Park School District should be utilizing this program in their schools. Thank you.
Okay, so the last piece is, we really want to be able to stay in the community and be educating everyone as often as we can. If there's educational booths that are available, we'll sign up and we'll bring staff there to give demonstrations or answer questions to the public. We recently have an educational video about recycling on the cable channel. If you're interested, if you're having an event, even here at the Senior Center, we encourage everyone to reach out to us. We'll partner with you to help your event be a zero-waste event. We'll encourage you to use the paper products. We'll deliver a green bin. So if anyone's having an event at the Senior Center, they should definitely reach out to us. We also want to give back to our community as often as we can, and I know Garth is going to talk about some of our givebacks in his presentation. But we recently had the compost giveaway, encouraging the residents to continue to compost, because their efforts are directly being given back to them via some nice dark rich compost. And Reyna meets with the kitchen staffs of all of our restaurants, which is a really difficult piece of the compost part of our program, but when she gets everybody on board and we can get all that diverted out of our waste stream. So that's good. That's our piece for now.
Okay, thank you very much, Kirsten and Reyna. I really appreciate it. Now I'll ask Garth Schultz from R3 Consulting to come on. And he is the consultant, the principal of the consulting firm that the city hired to conduct a full, comprehensive review of Recology's fiscal year 1920 rate application. So Garth, if you could.
Thank you, Keith, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, staff, and Recology staff, members of the public. Again, I'm Garth Schultz with R3. I was your primary analyst on this review of Recology's rate application. Just a quick disclaimer about R3. We exclusively serve local agencies and local governments throughout the state of California. We don't work for Recology. We don't work for other garbage companies. We work for you to represent your interests and ratepayer interests on matters like these. Can you go on to that? You're there. Very good. So we supported city staff review of Recology's rate application. It's the first time that there has been a thorough examination of a rate application like this proposed by Recology, or at least the first in quite some time. So it was an illustrative process for city staff and Recology alike. It's important to understand for context that, you know, Recology is the exclusive provider, you have a franchise agreement with Recology to provide the collection of garbage and organics and recycling here in the city from residents and businesses. And it includes a number of different services, not just curbside collection, but other types of services inclusive in one big package. They don't receive tax revenues. All of the revenues that they receive for compensation for these services is via the rates, maximum rates set by the city council, collected by the city via the utility bills, and then remitted to Recology. Next slide. Under the agreement, Recology is able to request an annual adjustment to rates. And through the agreement, the city has an obligation to review that rate application and consider adoption of rates pursuant to that detailed review. That's the role that we've served in association with your Finance Director here. This year's rate application was, as you've already heard, somewhat steeply affected by the international market change around recyclables prompted by China's National Sword policy. Kirsten already noted this, but really, the main effects of that were a decrease in net revenues received by Recology, which were previously used to offset the rates paid by the ratepayers here in the city. So there's no more of those revenues. Those revenues can't be used to offset rates any longer because they don't exist. And on the other end of that, rather than a net revenue, we now have a small net cost to process those recyclables. So rather than receiving a net amount of revenue per ton, there is now a net payment per ton due by Recology to external, third-party processors of recyclables. And what I mean by that is, there's folks who separate all of those things back out after you put them in your blue bin, your mixed papers and cans and bottles. There are machines and people who separate them back out at a plant or a facility and make them ready for sale on the regional and international marketplace. Next slide. I actually just covered that. So within that main adjustment, two-thirds of the rate that's being recommended is due to that change in the recyclables marketplace, fully 65%. It's anybody's guess where this is going to go. This is not an outcome that is fully resolved on the international scale. The trade wars are not helping it. It does seem to have stabilized somewhat for now, but this is something that can change in the future, and you should anticipate that there may be future changes depending on additional changes in the marketplace in the coming few years. Next slide. Now, to summarize their rate application, you've heard already, it was applied for at a 5.34% rate increase due to the changes in the marketplace. There's also increases in the cost that Recology bears for disposing of the contents of a garbage bin, the landfill material that goes directly into a hole in the ground and is not recovered for recyclables or organics. But there are other nominal changes in hourly wages for the union employee drivers and other costs that the company bears. Our review process is detailed in the franchise agreement between the city and Recology. And ultimately, what it ends up doing is tying all of their projected expenses and projected revenues back to actual numbers in Recology's audited financial statements, in the city's actual recovery of revenues through the ratepayers. And we reviewed all of that and made a number of adjustments that reduced the overall recommended rate in the following categories around disposal and processing, capital depreciation, and the others listed there. Next slide, please. So that's the brief summary of where we got for this. Folks generally want to know, with a rate adjustment like this, where do we compare? How do we compare? What does it look like in other communities? You can see here, San Bruno's July 1, 2019 rates with this 4.43% in comparison to other San Mateo County cities. You are slightly below the average of those current rates. Other rates are going up. And council members, if you recall, when I presented in the study session to you a number of weeks ago, there was some question about the lower rates on the right-hand side of that chart. I have confirmed that many of those have fewer government fees in those rates than are applied here in San Bruno, and that is a reason for the lower rates that you see there. Next slide. Also, for context, rates are changing throughout California and throughout the Bay Area, with a number of significant increases being seen elsewhere. This is not to minimize the 4.43% that you're considering tonight, but to put it into a context of what's going on in the solid waste marketplace. And these adjustments that we're seeing are due to a pressure cooker of circumstances that are occurring and are continuing to unfold throughout the state. There's increasing state regulations, and I'll show you a couple of slides on that shortly. These are in addition to what Reyna kind of covered with respect to organics, but it's an advancement of those, and it's something to be prepared for. The impacts of China's National Sword are of course a driver of this, but there's also the fact that we, as residents and businesses on a statewide level, and that tends to be true everywhere throughout the state, we are generating more waste over time. We're recycling more of it, and we're composting more of it, but we are also generating more of it. You might have heard or read about in the newspaper, the Amazon effect, where we're getting more shipped to our homes, there's more packaging, there's changes in packaging, and more of that packaging is lighter, more voluminous, fewer tons, but it fills up trucks quickly. And there's lots of plastic. There's a lot more plastic today than there was five years ago and 10 years ago and five years before that. So there is a set of circumstances that are driving rates up on a statewide level. I do this, I share this with you so you kind of understand it for context, but also to understand that there may be future changes. And I'm not predicting anything here. Recology's running a tight operation. They've demonstrated some of the efficiencies that they're providing within the community, but just so that you're aware of other things that are happening in this marketplace. Next slide, please. Folks also want to know what's driving the rate increase that's being considered. Keith, did you share the magnitude per month for residential ratepayers? This breaks that down for your most common ratepayer, which is those subscribing to the 32-gallon garbage service. Remember that the rates are based on the garbage container size, but it's inclusive of all of the services received by a resident or a business, meaning the recyclables and the organics and other ancillary services, as shown here. The changes to the marketplace for recyclables is the primary driver, with around 87 cents per month for most common ratepayers being that increase. The other amounts are shown here in the various categories. They're relatively de minimis in comparison to the impacts of the National Sword. Next slide. Over time, your rates have fluctuated generally between 1 and 5% per year, with an annual average below 3%. That's a good average, and it's a testament to the agreement and the terms and conditions you have in that agreement with Recology. That is somewhat lower than the average we see for other types of solid waste operations, which are very largely labor and capital-driven and don't tend to increase below 3% overall. So it has been a favorable rate adjustment over time for you there. Next slide. Now, this is kind of my final parting words, just to give you something to think about and mull over and look forward to, and this is included in our report to the council and to the city. There is pending state regulation. It actually has been passed and approved and signed into law back in 2016. The final rulemaking and regulations are currently under development and anticipate, are anticipated to be finalized by the end of this year. That deadline continues to extend over time. It seems like every six months. It grows by six months. But ultimately, and I'll actually go into the next slide as well, it involves increasing new programs and regulations on local agencies about the recovery of organic materials that are currently going to landfill. Much of what is in waste going to landfill, that's the garbage waste, is organic, meaning food scraps, sometimes edible food waste, other types of organic and decomposable material that really should be in your green bin. The state has regulated this in order to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. They are serious about the regulations. They will have penalties on agencies that fail to comply. I don't see San Bruno being at risk of that, given that you have programs on the ground for collection of these, but it is something to be aware of and prepare for and start to make some plans around as the requirements do take effect in the coming three years. And with that, I'm completed, and if you have questions for me at the end, I'll be happy to take them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Garth. I appreciate that. So just to wrap up the presentation here, just a brief overview of the steps that got us to tonight's presentation. On the 12th, there was a presentation that directed staff to start the 45-day notice to property owners, which was completed. We issued the notices, mailed them on March 28th. On May 14th is tonight's public hearing, considering the written responses and then requesting the waiving of the first reading. We would come back to council, the next city council meeting on May 28th, where a hearing is already scheduled for the second reading, and then the rates would take effect on July 1st if council is to act to approve of the rate increase. So with that said, again, the request to counsel this evening is to waive the first reading and adopt the ordinance enacting a 4.43% rate increase for Recology San Bruno Garbage and Recycling Services to take effect on July 1st of 2019. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. My understanding is there are no speaker cards?
Correct.
And I just want to check with the audience, is there anybody here who wanted to speak on this topic? Because once we close the public hearing, you'll be precluded from speaking. Seeing none, hearing none. Do I have action to close the public hearing?
To the chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0. Okay, with that, we'll bring it back to the city council for questions, comments, et cetera.
I'll go first.
Please.
So I had a question, Kirsten, in reference to reduction of 60%, which is great numbers, I think. And so kudos to Recology for really, and the program that you put into place to really educate our residents, because it's a very confusing process. In fact, I liked your picture in there on the presentation with the kids, where they had the three garbage cans and like the 3D effect with all the different types of recycling and what's recyclable and what's garbage. Where do you see this going? So if we get to a point where we really have reduced our dirty waste and we're really doing well recycling, and maybe the question is for both. I mean, with this sword, do we see this increasing in our cost to continue to not accept our recycling because of other means? You know, you anticipate being able to recycle your material, and you anticipate being able to recover some sort of revenues with that. And I don't know if you have information on that or if our consultant has information, but, I mean, we know where we're at today, and I appreciate the presentation, I appreciate the work the consultant's done, but what are some concerns going forward?
Mr. Schultz. Thank you. And just to restate the question, your question is pertaining to the recyclable stream and the possibility of markets recovering and maybe through actions here in the city, could you start to return a better rate on those materials?
You put it much more eloquently than I did.
Just want to make sure I understood correctly, too. You know, taking local action to improve the quality of the materials, to reduce the contamination, does provide Recology San Bruno or any other hauler a better opportunity to market those materials, get a better price, have a lower processing cost, and position themselves well for reversing back to a revenue generating, net revenue generating standpoint if markets recover. Now, of course, that's within the context still of your international marketplace, and if that marketplace doesn't have the demand for those materials, the price that you can fetch is low. But yes, it does have an immediate impact on Recology's ability to market, get processors who will agree to pay, and do that at a lower cost. And over the long run, that will be a better outcome for the city than continuing, not that you have, but if you were to move towards having less contamination and less of this outreach and education effort, it would be harder for Recology to do that on your behalf.
Great. And just to clarify in your presentation, really, two-thirds of our increase is really toward this issue, and so we as a community can really help in reducing our rates by really clean recycling.
I would say mitigate future rate increases by keeping clean recycling. You know, the cost for processing these is highly regulated by the state via a variety of different permits for any operator. We do see that those costs tend to increase over time, but by maintaining a clean stream, reducing contamination, you can certainly offset those increases in the future.
Great. And since you're there, I'll ask you another question.
Please.
How are we in preparing for Senate bill? Is our city recycling enough, and is it going to meet those standards?
I can't speak to that, as it's not an evaluation that we've been engaged to do. I will say, based on the services that I'm aware of that you have on the ground, you have organics in place for residential customers, you have an organics program for commercial customers. Recology and the city are implementing current state law regarding the mandatory commercial organics requirement. So at its surface, I think you're going to be well-prepared. There are some nuances that I think should be evaluated, just to make sure that you are fully prepared for some of the city's obligations, but at a strictly programmatic level, you've got a good foundation underneath you.
Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Marty?
Yes, Williams.
Yeah, Mr. Schultz. I won't go anywhere.
Because you're the expert, right? I'm sorry about that. So I think what I hear from our public is, wow, why does Recology get another rate increase? Like, they just got one last year, and they had another one. They get one every year. So as an expert in dealing with garbage companies and how waste haulers and how contracts, I would think, work, how common is it that where a company that's doing that business has the right to recover operating expenses every year? How can you describe this, give an answer to our public?
Yes, absolutely. I would say, you know, the term and condition of a company being able to propose an annual adjustment or increase to the rates is 100% common for franchise.
adjustment or increase to the rates is 100% common for franchise agreements with private solid waste haulers. And I would state that that's not a cost recovery, really, you know, you've got kind of every third year, an application process like this one that actually ties their application back to financial statements and looks at actual revenues. So, they have, every third year, they have an ability to kind of set it to cost of service, and in the intermediate years, it's tied to a market index, CPI. And that is also fairly common. So, it isn't every year that it's tied to the market, or sorry, that it's tied to actual costs of operations, it's only every so often, and in those intermediate years, you're doing it completely on an external basis. So, for private contracts, having an annual rate adjustment included in the agreement is essentially the standard of service, and I have not seen one for a private solid waste company that doesn't include that provision.
Thank you.
Any other questions from staff or, okay. Michael or Reyna, anything?
No.
Okay.
I was just going to make a final comment. If staff goes back to slide 20, I mean, you can really see the breakdown, and it's very minimal fees when you look at every aspect of that increase. So, I mean, you're talking pennies here, and you know, you've got things you can't control, so it's... Thank you.
Thank you. Reyna?
I just want to compliment Recology. I know Reyna stepped up when the beautification task force asked her to concentrate on the schools and training the young people up, so that hopefully, the future will be a little easier, and we won't even have to have Operation Clean Sweep because there won't be any trash. And also, I wanted to thank Recology for the lovely lunch that they provided for everyone at Operation Clean Sweep. And since we're on the topic of trash, cable has told me that the film that they did for Operation Clean Sweep is on our Channel 1, so yay, so people will be able to see it.
For myself, just wanted to chat with Recology. Those that did have a protest, will they be reached out to as far as the option of the 20-gallon and/or if there's reduced service costs due to economics? So, at least from our end, from staff as well as Recology, that those options are available for them, to see if there are opportunities for reduced costs? Is that done? You can do whatever you'd like. Yes, please.
Yes. The city has provided us with all of the protests, and anybody who isn't a 32-gallon or larger will be reached out to by our customer service staff to offer the 20-gallon, and I can tell you, 114, a good 80 of them or so are still in the 32-gallon, so there's definitely an opportunity for those individuals to have a cost savings coming up. And if I could just touch base on Councilmember Davis's comment about how are we positioned? We are positioned very, very proactive. That is Reyna's, that's why we have a Way Zero Specialist at Recology. That's her prime focus, is to make sure that we are compliant with all the regulations. So, she is constantly looking at the customers that come in for business, and the customer service staff will constantly advise her if a customer wants to stop service or reduce their service, so she's continually making sure that you guys were all in compliance. So, we are favorably positioned.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Is there any action? There is a waiving of the first reading.
Mayor Medina.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to clarify, there was a typo in the title. It says, "Hold public hearing, waive first reading, and adopt ordinance," and that should say, "Introduce ordinance." This is not an adoption of this ordinance at this time.
Thank you. So, back to, do you have a motion or a second to waive the first reading?
I move we waive the first reading.
Second.
Motion made in second to waive the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I hear five oh to approve. Then, we're into the introduction of the ordinance.
I move that we introduce the ordinance for approval.
Second.
Motion made in second, city clerk.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.